Are you ready to go, or?
We're all set, when you are.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry that we're waiting. Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order. And Jackie, would you please do the roll call?
Yes. Alex Miller. Ramona Alada Reid.
Present.
Dennis Alexander.
Here.
Shanda LaBeuf.
Present.
Veronica Velasco. Ray Reardon. Janet Anderson. You're muted Janet, but I've got you present.
Okay, is there any public comment out there? Opening it up for public comment?
I didn't receive any public comments via email up till 5:00 P.M.
Okay, so no comment, we'll go on to business. And we're going to do the House of the Quarter. And I believe Jackie sent out all the pictures already, but are you going to show them somehow? I don't know. Are you going to show them, Jackie, or?
I was trying to put together a slideshow, but it wouldn't. I couldn't access the file because I'm on a laptop from home, I'm sorry. I could work something out if anybody needs to view one in particular. I could just take a picture and share it on my screen if you need to. But otherwise, did everybody receive the nominees?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Do we have any nominations from the ones that you looked at? Anyone?
I do.
Okay.
In the email that we received, it was the very first one. Should, oh, should I, how do we refer to the houses?
So on the list I sent out, the first one would have been 1372 Bowles Court.
Yes ma'am, I'd like to nominate the Bowles Courthouse.
Can you show that one, Jackie?
I will do it right now, give me just a sec here.
I like that one, too.
Same here.
Okay, let's see.
Give me one sec. I don't know why my...
I've been able to bring up the houses, does... I could share my screen?
Oh, if you could Jenny, I'm sorry, I don't know why my camera is not coming up.
No problem, if you're already screen sharing, though, anybody who's seen screen sharing needs to turn theirs off before I can, so then...
I am not.
Host disabled participant screen sharing.
I will, let me see.
If I'm a co-host, I think I'm able to do so.
Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Give me one second, Ms. Janet. While I do this, I believe Mr. Macheko would like to say something one more. Okay, unmute yourself, you should be able to speak, Mr. Pacheco.
I just wanted to see if I was in, I can't tell.
You're here, and if you would like to, let me, I'm going to switch you to a panelist so you can have more participation. There you go.
I'm not able to, since it's disabled.
Yes, I am trying to, give me one second here, where are you, Janet? Allow, no, no. Is it letting you share now, Ms. Anderson?
Yes, it is.
Ooh Janet, you're fancy.
All right, here we go. Can you see my screen?
Yes, I can see you.
This is the first house on the list. Bowles Court is my understanding.
The only thing I have to ask Jackie is that, didn't we do one on Bowles Court before? I don't know if it's this one.
Um, we did.
Well, I know we did, I know we did one on Bowles Court, I know it was because Ray Bowles was on the same street and he had to excuse himself during that time.
And then just, just an FYI for the commission, when I sent out the nominees, I only included ones that hadn't won before, which none of the nominees won before, and also the owner-occupied homes.
Right, okay. Well, I like this one, so let's have a show of, not a show of hands, but what about this one at 12731 Bowles Court?
I'll nominate, unless somebody already did, but I'll nominate 1273 Bowles.
A second it.
Okay, all in agreement?
Aye.
Is Veronica on?
No, she's not here.
She's not here? Oh, so she's for, okay.
Shall I scroll through the rest of the homes, Ramona?
Uh, no, I think, well, I mean...
We're decided, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think we've made a decision, it's great, though.
And if the commission would like, I'd be happy to do a roll call vote, just for the record.
Okay.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Alexander.
Aye.
Commissioner LaBeuf.
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to line item B, I'm reading this off my telephone, because I don't have a printer. And that would be for the projects coming up, that we, that the council ought to reapproved, consideration of upcoming projects approved by the city council on the May 20th, 21 meeting. Citywide cleanup, I think Dennis Alexander was going to handle that, so can you speak to that, Mr. Alexander, the citywide cleanup?
Absolutely, Alex and I met several weeks ago, and just thought of a couple of Saturdays, hopefully in August, where we could do this. And make contact with Green Waste, and see that they'll provide the dumpsters. And you all may have received the locations from Mr. Soto. I think Alex may have forwarded them to you, and I think there are five of them altogether, and this would be a, this would be a major cleanup. So I think what we need to do tonight is just decide on what's the best, the best Saturday, and then go from there, and it doesn't necessarily have to be in August, I don't think, I know Alex wanted to be in August, I'm not sure exactly why it would have to be in August, but I think sometime before, it's, in the early, early autumn, late fall, early autumn, or late, late summer, early autumn, might be that, just we have time to contact Green Waste and, and they can put things on order if they need to.
Okay, so we have, we have the locations, that's good, and so we just have to pick a date and find out which, who's going to go where, right? Have you thought that out?
Right, right.
I have one question about the locations. It just, it just seems like two of them are just really close together, I mean, is that, has that been chosen for special reasons, maybe I'm not aware of?
Well, we asked Alfred Soto if, with the city, what he would recommend, because that's what he does all day, is look for these things. So we're basing on his recommendation, what, what would be the best places that are center points, I think, for what is, for lack of a better explanation, the dirtiest parts of the city, whether they be alleyways, or streetways, or yards, where people don't have to drive that far, so that, that's what the recommendation is on, as far as the sites.
Fair enough.
Now, if we need to move a little further apart, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that.
I think we should trust Mr. Soto's judgment, yeah.
Right.
Um, I'm, I'm in agreement with Dennis as far as the date, I wouldn't want August, I think the early part of September would be a better fit for us, because there will be a lot of advertising that we have to work out and things like that, so I appreciate your time.
August is next week, so we, I can be...
Yeah, I agree. So how is the 11th or the 18th of September for folks?
I won't be here. I'll be gone the 12th through the 18th.
Okay.
Sharon for the whole, for both those dates?
Yeah, she's gone.
I, I think that we need to look out for conflicts of time with Car Week and other things like that, right?
Yeah, that's in August, I think.
That's in August.
Right. Yeah.
What about the Labor Day weekend?
Is Labor Day weekend, isn't that the first weekend in September?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this would be either one of the two after that. For what it's worth, September 11th, I know that's a hallowed date in our, in our history, but at the same time, you know, we're, we're doing something for our community, so kind of...
Well, it should be a day of service.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Can I just make you aware of something, just for your information, as far as planning goes? You can hear me, just let you know, I don't know if it's a conflict or not, I don't think it is, but Danny Bakewell is having a, from 10 o'clock to 12, 1 o'clock, a, an overview of Campus Town, I don't know if that impacts any of your memberships wanting to attend that or not, but I just wanted to make you aware of that, and also make you aware of that I think you approved, I want to say $2,400, so you don't have to beg the company to donate, you have funds to pay for the dumpsters.
Mr. Pacheco, what, what date are you talking about, Danny Bakewell, is it the 11th or the 18th?
The 11th. That's up this morning, he told me, now he may change his mind, but as of this morning, he's having an overview of Campus Town and status report concerns, and it may not impact this group, I'm not sure it would or would not, but I did want to make you aware, it's not a large event, but I did want to make you aware, at least that will be held at the Old LeMahir Center.
Okay, thank you. Ramona, if I may?
Please.
You know, this is the 20th year of that horrible event, and I, I, I don't see a better way, a better time, a better day than, you know, it's coming together, it's community service, this would be, I think, it would be a good thing in view of that.
I agree with you, Mr. Alexander. Does everyone else, how do you feel, let's get a consensus for the 11th or the 18th, so...
To the weekends?
Ms. Anderson, how, how do you feel about that?
Oh, I think the 11th is great, what about back-to-back weekends, so is that, should we have a weekend in between, or should they be back-to-back, is it two weekends, right, it's two Saturdays, or no?
Just one.
Only one.
I'm for the 11th, the 18th might be, I mean, like, how many, are we worried about the public, the public is the ones who really, you know, it's them, so are they, they're not going to be at the Campus Town thing, are they?
The majority won't, I think the majority will, you know, if we, if we provide, provide the, the items to help them clean up their area, I think they don't want to do that.
Okay, I, I like the 11th. So is everyone okay with the 11th, do we vote on that, or do we just agree that 11 is okay? Shanda, oh, Shanda can't be here, that's right, yeah.
And there's going to be a commissioner at each site, each trash can, is that correct?
That's what we've always tried to do.
And there'll be six of us, so maybe, you know, you can bring a buddy or something with you to help you, instead of doing it by yourself.
And if there's a possibility of, of the Green Waste providing the, the receptacles free, would that be better than using the money, right?
Or, we can inquire. I'll make that contact. Jackie, do you have a person at Green Waste, a point of contact?
It's Sarah Treat.
Sarah Treat?
Yeah, her last name is Treat.
We'll write this down.
S.A.R.A.
Sarah Treat, I was like in trick-or-treats?
I can get you her contact information.
Do you have a phone number, Mr. Little?
Just take me just a moment here to look it up.
No, you could probably send that to Dennis, we need to think about advertisements, how we're going to get the word out to just our seaside folks without getting Monterey and Marina to come in to use our facilities. That's, have you talked, have you thought about that, Mr. Alexander, at all?
Um, you know, if we could, if we could...
About the end of the world, I doubt.
Any, any ideas, I mean, we could put it on the flyers, you know, for seaside, seaside residents, and make that evidence. It's something that, you know, and Alex and I were talking about, this is something we also wanted to let the, let the TV stations know about, if they, see if they wanted to cover, since it's, it's huge, it should, it will be huge, I remember 20, 20, 18 years ago, when we had a major, when this organization, before I was on the council, we had a major, a major alleyway cleanup, and two, two TV station covered it, KSBY and one of the other ones.
Well, did, you mean cover it on that day, or?
On that day.
Okay, yeah, because you don't want to...
That'd be great.
That's a great idea. Okay, so I'll, I'll... I'll contact KSBW and KON, I think I have a contact at KON, but KSBW, I don't really have anybody there, but KON, I do know some, or, you know, know of someone.
Well, I can try KSBW then, Ramona, if you wanted to do KON.
Thank you. And then I can do it on Nextdoor, because I think Nextdoor, the app, because I think you can do it just to seaside and not, there's a way you can let seaside know, instead of letting Monterey and PG know, so I could put it on there as well. And then the city, the city can put it on their website, obviously, right?
We can have it posted on the city website, I can also have them put, post on the city social media.
Good.
Pages, yes.
My seaside posse.
Yeah, seaside posse, for sure. And...
What are the times you're thinking about?
Oh, yeah.
You get the head of yourself, you're doing all this, and it's like, what are the times?
Do you have to be there at like 6:00 in the morning?
No, no.
We usually start at 8:39.
Yeah.
Till noon.
Noon. Close it up at noon, so 8:30 to 12:00. And we decide on 11th September, and we're going to go to the city website, all, all the things the city can help us with, go to that, and then the Nextdoor, and KON for on the day, Posse. And passing out flyers, Jackie, could you get those flyers to us, I mean, that's the whole city we got to cover, so is that something we can pick up in September, obviously, if you can get that ready for us, that would be nice.
I am happy to print out flyers, did you guys want to create your own design and send it to me to print, or did you want me to just put together a little draft and have you guys take a look at and approve it, before I have them print it out for you?
Is there something from last year to make it easier for you?
Which is, we, we do have the one from the neighborhood cleanup, that we can kind of maybe change a little bit of the verbiage, just to make it a citywide cleanup, and with the updated information.
Yeah, why don't we do that, that way it'll be a lot easier.
I'm more than happy to, I'll, I'll work on it early, just in case there's things you guys would like to change, we can have that ready.
Yeah, I'm sure Alex has want to put his two cents in on the design of that, so yeah, give it to us early, that'd be great.
Yes, I will ask her to translate it for the reverse side.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that's all figured out. Any other, any, anything else, Mr. Alexander, on that?
I guess I was just going to ask Mr. Pacheco, I'll try to make it to one of the next council meetings to just make an announcement, but would you also tell your fellow, you can just tell the, I know we just got back into having it in-person, and I don't know if that has, if a lot of people have been, been attending, but I'll make it a point to try to attend the next one, but if for some reason they're not, would you...
Yeah, and there's also a council meeting the first Thursday of the month, I think, so one week...
First, right, person, okay.
Thursday of September, that's a week before the... You know, for the people that work, they can, we can announce it one week in advance as well.
Sure.
Yeah, we could do it a couple of times.
Thank you.
Hello? Okay, I think Dave just froze, so...
Am I still there?
Yeah, you froze up a little bit there, but yeah, if you can get that to your fellow council persons, that would be helpful, Mr. Pacheco.
Yes, ma'am.
And then Ms. Alexander's going to announce it on that date, and so we'll move on to the next bullet, which is, what is it, citywide cleaning, advertising for the struggling businesses, and I think we're going to have Mr. Pacheco speak to that, please, because he runs a, he's been dealing with the businesses for the last couple of three months, so he can talk to us about that.
Yeah. And I'll try to offer some suggestions, because I think this is a big apple. And this, as you probably know, that city, per the, your NIC commission recommended $4,000 to assist, to assist struggling businesses in seaside. I think you have to look at it from a different angle, though, because you can't, let's just make this up, Angelina, you can't say Angelina's is a struggling business, or Salvation Army, because they're not, that's a gift of public funds, so you got to be careful on how you do that, so there's a couple ideas that you could do. One, you can do it, generic businesses that can, you know, shop seaside, you could narrow the scope to shop seaside, I mean, restaurants in seaside, you could do it, car dealerships in seaside, whatever you felt, you know, a best way to go, $4,000 does not go a long way, and talking to, I'm going to make a suggestion, and it's, because this is a, an important task, but it's also, you want to make it as successful as possible, so we have a new, and I talked to him today, a new assistant to the city manager, his name is Trevin, you also have a new communications specialist, director, staff person that's coming on Wednesday, and his name is Ernesto, I forgot his last name, so what I'm going to suggest, and I know Trevin has a lot of ideas, because he's, you know, very good with social media and reaching out, because his specialty is economic development for the city, that will be his focus, so I thought my, maybe it might be a, a way to approach is to meet with Ernesto and Trevin, try to get their input, not necessarily do what they suggest, but it gives you a place to start, and then the subcommittee made up of three members come back to the, and I see the larger body with a concept of how they want to expend the money, and the best way to expend the money. And then, obviously, do the necessary approaches to have the city expend the funds, or do the social media advertisement in the best and the most effective way. And, you know, you can, you, I don't want to ramble too long, but you know, you could do television, you can do radio, you could buy Facebook ads that target specific age groups, that can target different cities, that could target different things, and that target can be monitored, as far as how many people are looking at that Facebook ad, and again, I'm not saying to do it that way, as using for social media, I'm just saying it'd be nice to get their input and give you their expertise, and then come back with some ideas, so that's my suggestion, is to create a subcommittee, work with Trevin and Ernesto, possibly Mr. Little, depending on his schedule, and three members of the, of this board, to come back with a idea that... that maximizes the dollars and maximizes the, uh, financial impact of the dollars. So that's just my thoughts. And that's pretty much it. Thank you, Ramona.
I like the idea of the subcommittee, cuz we can be on the phone, we can be on this Zoom call all night if we tried to determine what we're gonna do with those four thousand dollars. Four thousand, yeah. So what do you guys think of that, of having a subcommittee, and who's, who's gonna raise their hand to that?
I think it's a good idea, and I'd like to be in a committee.
I had an idea. I don't know if this is feasible, but I guess four thousand dollars, like you said, is, is not a huge, huge amount, but wh- what if, um, local businesses were to offer, um, five percent off or ten percent off on, you know, certain purchases, and then that money could be used to help reimburse them? Is that, is that a misuse of the, is that too direct?
I'm just going with my gut. If you get Johnny, uh, Sprout, um, deja vu to, um, put ten percent or five percent or whatever dollar, then you would expect to ensure that his name gets higher mentioned than the other businesses. That may or may not be a concern. Cuz you gotta treat all, and depending on how you market it, to who you market to, are you doing the entire city? Are you doing just restaurants? I think those are the things. You gotta find your direction before you can, well, maybe you have to find a direction and a process and then work out the other things after you know how you're gonna go about it. But that is my opinion.
I agree, yeah. Uh, that's why I think that subcommittee is very important, because we all have ideas on how that's gonna, what we want that money spent on. If we can, um, do some brainstorming on that, that'd be great. So did I, did I hear Mr. Alexander volunteer for that?
Yes.
Ms. LeBeau, are you gonna be in town, or I know you've been ill, what, what?
No, I'm gonna be, I'll be gone September, then I'm going to Europe in October, so.
Well, lucky you, I wanna go. Okay, so, um, well, whoever's here, so Dennis, I'll do it with Dennis, and I know Alex will probably wanna be on it. That, I didn't mean to go down in my voice, though. It's just Alex, Ramona, uh, Dennis.
And, and just remember that Trevin, um, is very much interested in meeting, um, with you all, um, cuz he's gonna be the guy.
Yeah.
That's his, um, forte, is economic development. Um, and then the new communication guy, I don't, hi, his name's Ernesto, he's gonna start Wednesday, I've been told. Uh, Trevin recommended Ernesto to be part of that, because his specialty will be ensuring the public is aware of services as well as businesses. So just a thought.
So we'll meet with them first, or have Alex or someone meet with them first and get the ideas from them, and then uh, that person can meet with the subcommittee and talk about, talk about it more.
Yeah, I would suggest a couple of you meet with, um, that, those two people, cuz it gives, cuz sometimes one forgets with the other one, you know, to make sure you have all your notes together.
Well, we as a subcommittee, then we'll, we'll visit with them. That's Alex, Ramona, and Dennis.
Ramona?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is, I guess for you and for, for Dave and, and the, any, the city staff, are, do commissions have the green light now to meet together, or was it ever, had we always had that? I mean, before, you know, since, since the, the masking has lifted and now since the council meetings are in person again, can we, can we do that again?
So I don't believe that we have any commissions or committees that are, that are meeting in person presently, but I, I believe that that's where we're headed toward. I mean, other than the, other than the city council, I know the city council is, is at in-person meetings, but I don't believe any of the, I'm not aware of any of the committees or commissions that have met yet.
Okay.
I do know the Parks and Rec is, has discussed it, and they may have even, they've discussed it, they voted on it, whether to do it or not, and I'm getting my meetings mixed up, if they approved it or not, but it's the, the, uh, I think it's on your agenda later on, um, towards the end of your agenda, where, if that's a direction you wanna go in or not. It's at the bottom of, it's the last item on your agenda, I believe.
That's correct. So right now, the subcommittees can meet. That, you know, we know that, we know that all three of us can meet with those two staff members. Is that right, Mr. Little? That would be okay. Mr. Little, to, um, have the three of us meet with those two staff members in person?
Yes.
That's okay?
I believe that is okay, sure.
Okay.
Now, in public places, when any gatherings in public places, um, it's a recommendation from the state that we, that we wear masks. So we are wearing masks inside City Hall.
Of course.
And that was my concern, the subcommittee, rather than all of the subcommittee, and, uh, so if, um, we would like to do that, I would like to meet in person, just because we're gonna be, you know, um, sharing thoughts, and they go, it goes much easier than there.
Okay.
We all see that with these Zoom.
That's great.
That's true, that meeting in person is just more, juices flow better.
Yeah. Okay. So we all buttoned up on that, because it'll, it'll just go on forever. So we, we're gonna do a subcommittee, right?
Yeah.
About the spending of that money, and then we'll bring it back to you guys and see how you feel about it. And the next item, the bullet is for signage at the parks that, um, that they approved. I don't know how much monies went to that, but, um, I know, just from being from FOSPA, I know that all those parks, you know, I think there's seven or nine, they're gonna be done, completed, and then there's more throughout the city that they designated, along with the Sonoma Basketball Court Ellis Park, I guess.
And, and I'm sorry, Ramona, um, we can go back after, but I think we skipped past, um, the empty lot at sixteen oh one Fremont Boulevard.
Oh, yeah.
I, I just, yeah, and, and we can definitely do it after if you'd like, but just to be sure that we know we passed right over it.
Okay, I'll go back to that, uh, after this, um, the signage. And I think the signage is in works. Last I heard from FOSPA is that they turned in everything to city, to the city. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and they've turned in all the pictures as to where they want those signs to go at each park. So it's in Public Works' hands now, and we're just kinda waiting for Public Works to do the job. And I, you know, I'm not giving say when that's gonna be, but hopefully before the New Year.
Yeah.
But that's a work in progress.
Right. I do know that they've been given an estimate on the prices, uh, for the, um, for the, um, signs, and I do know that, uh, Dave is moving on it, and I know it's thirty thousand dollars. Uh, and they're probably, you know, doing, far majority, large, large, large majority of the parks, but it don't have signs currently.
Okay, so are we all in agreement with that? I mean, does anyone have anything to add to that, that signage? Do they have, um, anything? Ms. LeBeau?
No.
Ms. Anderson? No, no. And Mr. Alexander?
No.
Okay, good. All right, and we'll go back up to that other one we missed, the empty lot at sixteen oh one Fremont, and I have no idea, so I'm gonna have Mr. Little talk to that, speak to that subject. I think that's the corner of Fremont and Broadway?
Yeah. Where the Chevron Station used to be?
Yes, ma'am. Do you have anything current, Mr. Little? I don't know. I don't know why that's on there.
If I recall, I think we were talking about different, uh, possibilities, uh, contacting the owner, seeing if you wanted to fix it up, buying it, all kinds of different stuff, right?
Yeah, the city was gonna look into that for us, and I don't even know if we, I don't, can't even remember if we allocated any funds to that park or that.
Just to, just to jump in, I think you allocated twenty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Uh, I do know the city is trying to, um, reach out to them, um, and try to get a cost, uh, to see if they're interested in selling. So the city is, has, uh, started the process of trying to locate them and seeing if they're interested, and, um, and that was, uh, two weeks ago. But we're just not sure if they wanna sell it in for how much. Uh, so that's where they're going.
Is that what you heard? Well, um, Mr. Little, is that what you heard as well?
Yeah, that's my understanding, that, that there was twenty thousand dollars that was, that was uh, recommended by the Neighborhood Improvement Commission as, as, to go toward possibly assisting the city in a purchasing discussion or something with the property. And that, um, as far as I know, that, that money wasn't, it wasn't taken out or separated from the recommendations that were initially approved by the council.
So it might just be the money, that money might, could that money just be spent on the purchase? I mean, we don't have any say on that, right? I mean, do you think that is true, or?
Well, I think that was, I think that was the idea.
Okay.
It could go toward the purchase, or it could go toward anything having to do with whatever the s- the city, um, could do with the property or, or just discuss with the owner.
Okay.
I don't have a lot of information about it, except
Yeah.
what was discussed at the meetings that we were, that we were.
Yeah. Okay, if there's nothing else on that one, we'll jump on down to the beauti- beautification of our bridge on San Pablo. And that's what they, that's in the hands of a subcommittee, and that's a work in progress as well. So I think the subcommittee's gonna meet. Um, well, we have to, I think Alex wants to talk to us about that. So maybe he'll get, we'll probably get a date together in August, so we can discuss that, because we have nothing to talk to, to everyone about, unless Mr. Little has a little information from the city engineer or anything. I don't even know if she knows about the bridge. I mean, she knows about the bridge, obviously.
So my suggestion would be to have your subcommittee prepare some ideas that could be shared and considered by the Arts and History Commission, and then once those ideas materialize and could be ready for, um, um, an RFP, we can take that to the city engineer.
Okay.
Because this is a transportation feature over a public street, you know, the city engineer has to review and provide her approval before any proposed alterations get heard.
Okay. So that'll be our first. Okay, that'll be our first step, okay.
Ms. Ramona?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna let you know my computer's about to die, and I'm looking for my, um, my cord.
No.
How is that gonna affect anything, I, I, if I suddenly drop off?
Yeah, we're okay, we're almost done. So hopefully we'll be. Okay, so we'll move on to the next one, which is, um, the sidewalk improvements, and I think that's an ongoing thing. I think they've got our money, and they're completing that. Mr. Little, do you have anything to say on that? I think that's in progress, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll go on to item C, and we're gonna discuss and consider resuming in-person meetings or Zoom. Any thoughts on that, guys?
If I may, Ramona?
Please.
Sure. Um, I think you, my, my, uh, concern earlier is, uh, these have been fine, they've done the job, but, uh, I feel if we're careful, masks, and, uh, even if we need to do outdoors until it gets cooler out, uh, just having things indoors, it just our, our boss flow easier, our, my, uh, in, in person, our boss flow easier. Um, you know, it's, it's, uh, I, I think, I think the whole country has been feeling that, and these Zoom meetings have been great for the, the purposes that they serve, but, um, it's been, it's been tough getting, you know, contacts and ideas as, as easily. So, uh, it's not a problem. I would like to see us go back to in-person, making sure that we cover all, uh, safe steps.
I agree.
I concur too. If, if city staff will let us, uh, let us back in, I, I'm for that with our masks. That's mandatory, right, Mr. Little, for the, the building, right? Masks?
Present, it is.
Present it is, okay.
And I can, I can make that, that wish known that, um, that NIC would like to meet, uh, the next meeting they'd like to have here at the city.
Okay.
I can put that in.
Any objections to that? Any objections?
Does anything to vote at this time?
I don't know.
They'd probably vote on it to have it in the record.
Okay. Jackie, can you do, um, official roll call on that one?
Absolutely. So I am going to do a roll call vote on resuming in-person meetings for the Neighborhood Improvement Commission. Uh, Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner LeBeau?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Good, okay. All right, and item fly, line item five is we're gonna adjourn the meeting. Oh, well, is there anything the commissioners wanna say? I'm sorry, we have that, that's not in here, but usually don't we have Commissioner Speaks or something?
Report.
Please share your reports if you have them.
Yeah. I found my cord.
No report from me.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, I'll just keep, uh, everybody updated on my contacts with both KSBW and the, um, and, and Mr. Little, did you say you're going to send me a contact number for, uh, Ms. Treat?
So I sent it as a direct message. Uh, can you see the direct message in your, on your Zoom feed? It's in the chat, but I'll, I'll give you her direct number, if you're ready.
Okay.
Okay, Sarah Treat, uh, the area code is eight-three-one. Nine-two-zero.
Nine-two-zero.
Five-four-seven-five.
Five-four-seven-five.
She's the customer service and outreach manager for Green Waste.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis, can you have that information for us at our um, next meeting?
Um, are we going back to monthly meetings or quarters still?
I mean, well, gosh, how are we gonna do this? Cuz we'd need to know it, that, um, what she said to you, if that's gonna be a, okay, how?
Right, I mean, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just keep everybody updated on the dot.
And if you'd like, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, if you'd like, um, Dennis, you're welcome to send me the info, and I'll share with the commission.
Okay.
That's great. Thank you, Jackie. That's what I was gonna say, you can, you can share it with us, and we'll.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, any comments?
Her phone died, her computer died.
It gets died. Okay, I just needed to have Jackie, please, on the next agenda, we should have a discussion about the monies coming up, whatever monies that is that the city gives us for the Airbnb or whatever it's called. Um, huh? Yeah, that. That, you know, maybe we should start looking at that early, so we're not doing it a week before the budget ends. So if that could be on the budget, Jackie, please.
I'll definitely add it on.
Thank you, Derek. I thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Ms. Toa. Okay. Adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Bye, you too.
Bye.
Thanks. Have fun in Europe. Yeah, I'm sure we'll see each other before that maybe, though.
Dennis? Are you still there? Oh, well.
Yeah. Bye, Mr. Pacheco. Thank you.
Bye. Is Dennis still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
I'm having a town hall, if you want, at the Embassy Suites at six o'clock. August second, if anybody's interested on the commission. Great, August second, six o'clock, Embassy Suites.
That's next Monday?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be a little bit late. I'm on the board of the Monterey Rape Crisis Center, and we have a, a, a meeting that night at five thirty, so I'll, I'll probably be a little bit late.
I just want to invite you, as well as all of you, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.